So, item F2 is the approval of request for proposal to search firms for the new superintendent. And Dr. Sarves, I think you will be presenting this to us?
No, actually, we have Craig Price here, who's legal counsel for the district, who can do a presentation on this. I'm stepping out of this process.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Price?
Thank you very much. Obviously, you all have the draft, RFP. You've had an opportunity to review it. I don't see that there's any need to go through it section by section other than to point out additions or changes that you would like to see made. I have three additions that I've included in something I'll show in just a minute. But beyond that, and in thinking ahead in terms of timelines, you can see at the top, I left the closing date blank. One scenario that you might think about would be to put in a closing date for receipt of RFPs for Friday, January 14. And that would allow the various proposals to be examined the following week with a recommendation to be made at the end of the week and go out with the board package for the meeting on the 25th, at which time the board could identify, say, three search firms that it wished to interview. I mean, obviously, you can pick any number that you want. And the number that you pick may depend on what you see. It could only be a couple of firms, et cetera. But probably three is as much as you would want to tackle in one night. The point being that I think it would be helpful if you specified the closing date. And if it were, for example, January 14, then I would recommend that we add a sentence in the RFP that would tell the firms that it's anticipated that there will be board interviews on January 25, so that they could put that in their calendar. No, I'm sorry. Kate Parker is looking at me. That's incorrect. It would be February, is it February 7? What's the date?
February 8.
Because I think it would be important for them to have the information if we could give it to them. Along with that, for after the RFPs, after the proposals are received hypothetically on January 14, somebody needs to be charged with the responsibility, I think, for screening them and at least coming up with a tentative proposal for those firms who the board will decide should be asked back for interviews. And one possibility would be if you establish your own ad hoc committee, if, say, two of you, to screen them. The entire board, as soon as the proposals are received, would get them in the mail. But two board members would work together, carefully screen them, and bring back a recommendation as to which, say hypothetically, again, three firms are going to be selected for interview, possibly involving any follow-up information that you may wish to obtain during that one week period. Otherwise, of course, the board could, you know, do it on its own on the 25th, but there wouldn't be the opportunity for any further background or any follow-up with respect to any issues that come up.
Mr. Price, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
If we were to, well, hopefully, we will approve the RFP tonight, how soon will it go out?
This week. I've been collecting a pretty lengthy list from different sources of search firms that pretty much covers the waterfront. Many of them are in California. There are also a number of national search firms, some of which are more active than others in California. But the board isn't going to be hurt by erring on the broadside. So, we ought to be able to get that out this week and also put it on the district website.
Okay, thank you.
So, beyond what you received in your board packages, there are three suggested changes that are in red. The bottom change, which is item J, was suggested by Ms. Deacon. And it's common that the search team that's retained at the end of the process facilitate a workshop with the new superintendent and the board. And I think that was a very good idea on her part. And in going over this, I noticed that there wasn't anything that was specified having to do with having the search consultant work with the board to prepare essentially a job description, a position profile that would tie in with the input that the board collects from whatever sources in terms of the qualities that they're looking for. And I thought that might be helpful. And then the last one, item E, to obtain the consultant's input with respect to what sort of a salary and benefit range should you be looking at in order to obtain qualified candidates that meet the criteria that you're going to establish? So, those are the three changes I have in mind. You know, one of the factors that boards consider your size and larger in doing these kinds of things is whether or not they're going to go out for what they consider to be a national search or whether it's going to be more confined to the state. Board members may wish to comment on that. But without emphasizing that it's a national search, the search consultant certainly has the option of attracting candidates who might be from out of state. But I think that, to a very large extent, you are going to want to rely on a discussion between the board and the search consultant, who is most knowledgeable about this, concerning how the process should best work, what you're going to be looking for, what the area should be, and all of these other issues. As we talked about, I think, two weeks ago, many people think that the pre-planning process with the search consultant is the most or one of the most important aspects of what they do.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions?
From a timing standpoint, the way I understood is your suggestion is that we put a reception date of 14th. We spend time analyzing them. And on the 25th, choose the three or four that we might want to interview. And then come back on the 8th and interview those three or four.
Correct.
I guess I would suggest the possibility of having a special meeting on the 1st to do that and just have a meeting or workshop, whatever it is, specifically for interviewing the search firms and not try to tie it to the meeting on the 8th.
Well, that certainly seems like it could be a way to make it run smoothly. And I don't know if there'd be any objections to that from board members. Would everybody be available on February 1st?
Well, I'll chime in, though, and say, I mean, I think it would also be feasible for us to have a special meeting before the 25th and have the interviews on the 25th. But sometime, maybe not necessarily on the Tuesday before. But that might be too quick. But, you know, that's another possibility, too.
I would love to do that. I was looking at the calendar, and it's just, your timeframe is so short. But if we could do it faster, you know, maybe move the reception date to the 12th to give you time to analyze them and have then a special meeting on the 18th.
Well, in order for me to participate in all of them, it would have to be that way because I'm actually going to visit my son in China, and I'm leaving on the 26th of January. So, this alternate scenario would work well for me. And just going back to one of Mr. Price's recommendations, we might want to think about selecting a couple of board members who do kind of a pre-screening and make a recommendation. We would all get to see all the applications. But if there was this need for follow-up, perhaps we could do that. Certainly, everyone could participate in, you know, in the process. But it might help, it might expedite things to have a couple of people just sit down and call through them and get the top picks.
Can I just ask, Mr. Herron, what was your timeline again? You said they would be, we would receive them on the 14th. And then you said...
And then, on the 25th, did I say, make the decision to bring them back? And bring them back on the 1st at a special meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you just...
But that was my first one. But the second one was to get them by the 12th, review them, make the decision on the, well, have a special meeting, I guess, on the 18th to select the three or four and then have them make presentations at our meeting on the 25th.
Okay. I don't think I will be available on January 18th. I apologize.
That's our normal meeting date.
No. Well, I mean, Tuesdays are...
I think the 25th is...
Is there any other day that week that you'd be available?
Yes, probably just around any other day that week.
Because we can have a special meeting on this on a different day.
Mm-hmm.
Very willing to do that. So, not Martin Luther King, but...
Wednesday, the following Wednes...
Wednesday.
Any day, any day that week, yes. As long as we give, as long as we give the candidates time to prepare for our interview with them.
Maybe Wednesday, the 19th?
But we would be interviewing them on the 25th, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that's something we can maybe plan and see if we can move this forward quickly. Okay. More questions for Mr. ...
If you were to do that on the 19th, then you could still accept them on the 14th.
Okay, I'm just sort of thinking in my head about it being Martin Luther King Jr. weekend and thinking it might still be better to try to get it on the 12th or the 13th, so that there's time before that three-day weekend.
If you want, yeah. If you want to do, whoever you select to make the review, they may want to do some research or something. You really narrow that window down from the 12th to the 19th, or 14th to the 19th. You've got a weekend, holiday, and one day. So, it can be done.
If I could interrupt, my belief is that these search firms respond to a lot of RFPs and that they're not going to be inventing this. And they will be supplementing probably a template that they use. And I think that the board's timing is such that the 12th ought to work. I think that ought to give them an adequate amount of time, presuming we get it released by the end of this week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Price. Other questions regarding this? Okay. Parker?
Well, two things. One is, again, on the idea of having a subcommittee that's doing some screening. I also think that's a really good idea. And I actually think it would be a good idea for our board president and vice president to be working on that together if there's no objections from that since you, Ms. Cordero, will certainly be taking the lead on this search. And it could be that Ms. Deacon needs to step in for you at any time. So, I would hope that you two would be willing to do that. And then, I like the way the RFP looks. I just have a question for you, Mr. Price. You've looked at, I think, more of these than I have. And the ones that I saw tended to be a little bit more bare bones. The page two of this RFP has sort of, you know, the district has a rich and proud history and enjoys a diverse population. A little bit more information than I've seen in some of the other RFPs. And I'm just wondering if you've seen it in other ones? And why you...
I, there's a, I looked at a potpourri of different districts and RFPs that have gone out, big districts and small districts. Most of them actually have a history. My point in doing this wasn't just to, you know, write a little interesting piece, but for, because of the possibility that there could be firms from areas that are fairly remote that don't know anything about Santa Barbara, to make sure that they understood that, in effect, this is going to be a high-demand group, that it's a sophisticated board, that it's a highly educated community. It's a community that's very aware. And it's a community that is also very supportive of local education and takes it seriously. So, the point was to get the message across that there might be some real differences between this kind of a search and certain types of searches that they conduct in other areas.
All right, thank you.
How's that for an explanation?
That's a good explanation. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Okay. Ms. Lamone?
Mr. Price, well, it's on my page four, under vendor profile. Item number four, where it discusses the personnel that the vendor may use, do you think that that language will allow us to select the personnel versus a personnel being assigned to us?
And that's an excellent question. And one of your fellow board members raised that two weeks ago. And for that reason, I put in the last sentence, which is intended to really signal to them that we have an interest in making sure, or you have an interest in making sure, that you're going to be working with the right person. And actually, one of the things that I was thinking about when I mentioned that between the time of receipt of the proposals and selection of who it is that's going to be interviewed, there's a possibility that there could, that your board's subcommittee, if you go in that direction, might want to do something in this regard, depending on who it is.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Deacon?
I just wanted to weigh in on the national versus state piece because that was something that we learned a little bit about at CSBA. And it actually just confirmed my thinking, which was that, for the most part, the best qualified candidates probably are going to be well-versed in California law and policy and politics. And so, the general sentiment was, yeah, you could go outside the state. But, you know, there was a feeling that perhaps anyone you might find out of state would have to, would have to really get up to speed on California ed code and policies. And so, I guess my inclination would be to pretty much let the firms know we're focusing on the state.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Parker?
And on that, and on that, though, I want to be sure that we ask them for, because I don't know what the cost differential is between running a state search and a national search. And I just want to be sure we get the best candidate. And it could be that it's somebody that used to be in state but is now out of state. And so, I want to be sure we ask that question of the vendor. And I'm glad that it doesn't specify in this RFP.
Well, if I can reply to that, please. I want to point out that by having this go beyond a bare-bones RFP, by asking them to go the extra length to differentiate themselves from other search consultants, to leave open the question of whether it's a national or a limited search, that also opens it up a little wider, I think, in terms of the pricing that you can expect to get back from them. The more you ask them to do, the more that they are going to need to include in covering themselves. However, on balance, I still think that it's better to start with as much as you could possibly benefit from. And if you decide to narrow it down, for example, and just tell them that they're not going to need to advertise or do any traveling nationally, that that price can be negotiated down because the option is left open for negotiations.
I have a question, Mr. Price. I was looking under the vendor profile. I was wondering if we could include something asking for maybe a description of the vendor's experience working with Spanish-speaking populations? Because I'd like, in the community outreach that we're, or community focus groups that we're going to want this firm to meet with, I'm anticipating that there would be members of the Spanish-speaking population who would be participating.
Yes, I can certainly do that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay. Do we...
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, great.
So, with that addition and with the inclusion of the three items, Mr. Price, that you had brought forward, I will move that we approve this request for proposal to search for a new superintendent with the return date being January 12. And we have one public comment.
Do we want to have a second before...
I'll second that.
Okay. Now, we have discussion, we'll take public comment.
Lane Wheeler?
Lane Wheeler, President of SBT. SBT is requesting to get an amended, get a copy of the amended document immediately so I can have it for our distribution purposes. Along the same lines as the request that Mrs. Cordero made, I don't see anything in here about previous relationships with labor organizations. It may be inherent in the document, and I just missed the specific reference to it. But I think it would be certainly a good venue to have in there. And I'm hoping that the clause, the language in some of the clauses allows the district and the search firm to go out looking actively for superintendents that are successful in districts that may not be in a general application pool right now or looking for a job, somebody who's successfully employed but has a very measured track record that will allow us to possibly entice them to enter their name into this interview. So, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Herron?
On the motion, did I understand, Mr. Price, that you wanted to also include in the document the date that the interviews might take place?
Yes.
So, that would be the 25th?
Yes, and I'd put that in there as a tentative. But I think it would be useful to alert them.
I'm just thinking, for the motion, should that be added to the motion?
I'm happy to add that to the motion.
And I'm happy to second that addition.
Okay. So, any further discussion? We'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you.
One other question. Should we pass a motion to have a special meeting on the 19th?
I don't think we need to do that by motion, do we?
We don't?
I've got a note here for Mimi Hall right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We'll just put it on the list. Thank you.
Okay, item F3. This may be one that I'm hoping doesn't take a lot of discussion. But certainly, we can if we need to. This is the approval of Resolution 2010/11-25, Bond Measure Q, and Resolution 2010/11-26, Bond Measure R, declaring the result of the school bond elections held in November, held November 2nd, 2010.
Well, this is a certification of the election that we are reading into our record by passing this resolution. Again, these measures passed by an overwhelming margin, 70% in one district, 72% in the other district. We're very pleased with that. And this starts the clock ticking on the 60-day period within which we need to put a committee, Citizens Oversight Committee, in place. And we've already started that process by way of soliciting people who might be interested. So, I'm asking you to approve these resolutions so that we can move forward.
Ms. Parker?
And it was great, with great pleasure that I will approve the Resolution 2010, move that we approve the Resolution 2010/11-25 and Resolution 2010/11-26.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board.
And we certainly appreciate the public support in passing those measures. Onto item F4. Public hearing and board consideration of Resolution Number 2010/2011-24 to apply for a waiver to extend the school accountability report card deadline.
And Robyn Swawski, our Associate Superintendent, will present this.
And I'm not quite sure when the, do I present it first and then we have a hearing? We don't, we have to open a...
We should stop, open a hearing.
Sorry, okay. In honor of the public hearing, I will close momentarily our board meeting and open our public hearing.
Okay. You do have in front of you the information that on November 9th, the State Board of Education approved a change due to budget cuts, that the CDE will no longer be providing data files for our school accountability, school accountability report cards, better known as the SARC. And, of course, we found out immediately after that. And with that was the recommendation from the state to have all districts put forth a resolution asking for, applying for a 60-day waiver. And so, the resolution is there in front of you. We used a template that we got from the county office. And we notified all the schools. They, we had everything posted at the schools and then here as well. As you can see on the application, we also met with, excuse me, CSB, SBT and CSEA as prescribed here at Bargaining Units. And they both were fine with it and supported it. We also had the requirement of talking to an advisory group. So, we used the parent advisory groups and sent out information about it. Unfortunately, I found out about it in the afternoon of the day we met on the Friday. So, I could have talked about it in person if I'd known, but we missed it by a few hours. Nevertheless, we got no responses opposing or questioning anything. So, I'm ready to ask you for the, applying for the, or pass the resolution to apply for it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? No. Okay. Board members?
On the resolution, my name is on there as president, and I'm not president anymore. So, I'm sure, and we'll sign that.
We'll draw a line through that.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with that correction, I guess we can adjourn the public hearing and reopen the board meeting.
And with that, I will move that we pass Resolution Number 2010/2011-24 to apply for a waiver to extend the school accountability report card deadline.
I'll second that. And I'll just add, I suspect we'll be seeing more and more of these kinds of things where it's the classic unfunded mandate, and we'll be doing it ourselves.
Yes, I believe so. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item F5. And this is a modification of the Peabody Charter School Memorandum of Understanding for Enrollment Priorities and Description of Open Enrollment Procedures. And I believe that we do have public comment on this one. So, we'll take public comment at this time.
Andrew Beal, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name's Andy Beal. I'm a dad of a first grader at Peabody. And I'm completely new to the inner workings of the Santa Barbara School District. So, it's come as a bit of a devastation and a shock to me that my daughter, who will be a kindergartner next year, actually has a significant chance of not being enrolled in Peabody due to the lottery. I'm embarrassingly uninformed about the charter specifics. And this came as a complete surprise that I could be in this situation right now. Having invested so much in the community, so much so far in the school, both my wife and I volunteer on a weekly basis at Peabody. What I do know is that... What I do know is that Peabody is very much like the parent-child workshops that I have been working very hard for, for the last five years and we have as a, as a collection of many, many families, I think really learned as a, as a whole what community is here in Santa Barbara and how important child education, early childhood education is. And I've taken those lessons over the last five years and already started applying them at Peabody. And to me, um, I look at how education is at Peabody, I look at how, how involved I've become in my child's education through the workshops and I'm just starkly aware of how, in my eyes, education has changed so much over the last 30 years. I look at my parents very fondly, but I'm just shocked at, at how they and, and their friends and my peers at very good public schools grew up with a disconnected arm-length association with parents and the children. Things are very different here in this town and I hope that it stays that way. So my wife and I both volunteer, we're both hardworking, making ends meet, working and, and investing in Peabody as much as we do costs us dearly from a financial point of view, because we give up that time at our careers. But we do it because we believe in the effect of building that community and we believe that, that our world is turning in a, in an important way right now towards building sustainable family units. And I think that's what, um, allowing this amendment will help promote, is keeping families together, keeping dual-working parents able to both volunteer cohesively at a single school and not be split across.
You have 30 seconds.
And I'm actually done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beal.
Thank you very much. Dr. Sarvis, would you like to?
I, I'd be happy to do a quick review, in fact, let me respond first of all by saying that each year, some 130 potential kindergartners who live in the Peabody attendance area, let alone any other students, you know, any student from the community can apply, have that same difficulty of vying for 100 seats in kindergarten. And let me review the specifics here and then we have Dr. Kate Ford with us who may want to, uh, address some of them. Uh, one thing that the school is asking for is that there be a priority given to siblings of currently enrolled students who live in the former Peabody attendance area and that they have priority over the other residents who are living in the former Peabody attendance area who do not have older siblings. And the school has spelled out a couple of things, uh, that we think are significant. On the last couple of pages, you'll see, uh, a good description of the outreach methods, uh, to recruit families, let them know, provide information so that uh, families will know this. You see a description of the open enrollment date, the January 4th through 14th, which extends over, well, over a weekend, over essentially two-week period of time. Which would be that o- o- open enrollment period and we have the assurance of the school that there would not be a first-come-first-served basis for enrolling students during that period in time. In other words, anyone who got their names in during that period would have an equal chance of being selected. Uh, this would apply to kindergarten students coming into the school, would also apply to other students coming in at other grade levels who are not currently enrolled in the school. And with that, perhaps Kate Ford feels she needs to add something, would you like to come up to the podium?
Sure.
Or at least to answer questions on the part of the Board.
Good evening, Board. I, uh, just am very excited about the possibility of adding this addition, modification amendment to the enrollment policy. I think when we revised the charter uh, and became independent in 2007, it was just the beginning of, um, an awareness of the density of the population of the San Roque area and that corridor down Delavina. And so each year, it, the numbers have increased of students who are eligible to become enrolled at Peabody Charter. And the news is good that we have lots of people interested, lots of people in the area. But as Mr. Beal said, it's really our intent, of course, to be a f- a family-oriented school. This is a family-oriented town, this is a family-oriented district. And with that in mind, that there will be, for example, next year, uh, in January, at least 130, perhaps 140 kindergarten families who want to enroll, it seems fair, right, and just that the siblings of currently enrolled Peabody attendance area students have first priority.
Are there questions from the Board?
I
Mr. Herron?
I have several questions, I emailed them out, I don't know if you had a chance to read them or not.
I didn't receive them.
Okay, today I emailed them. So I'll just go through them if you don't mind.
Sure.
In your, and, and, and this comes about because of a, I had a lot of communication with people during the last year's process and the words, um, that say one thing on the website or in your policy and then the practice seem to be different. So my first question is, on the, the effective 7-1-0-7 charter enrollment policy underlined in this, in the second set, uh, well, second major paragraph, it says, "With the exception of existing students who are in guaranteed enrollment in the following school year." You then go on in point one saying, "Oh, as long as they fulfill their requirements." But to me, the people that talk to me focused on the underlying sentence that says they're guaranteed. I, I think you should qualify that first one, uh, "As long as they have met the requirements, they're guaranteed." And then the follow-up question would be, those who don't meet it, where do they follow? Where do they fall, or do they fall into the priorities below? If somebody didn't meet your qualifications, can they still get on a lottery list in the other categories?
No.
Where does it say that?
They can be disenrolled.
But where does it, does it say that anyplace?
Um, I'm not sure that it says that anywhere. Do you think it should?
Well, if I'm a district resident and I qualify, um, at number five, and, and for some reason you get to number five and I've, and I've enrolled as an in-district resident, can you turn me down?
If you haven't met the qualifications of being a student?
Being a, being a family, meeting the requirements. I, I just point that out, but the main one is this underlying sentence, and I don't know why it's underlined, because it's underlined on your website too. But it's a pretty bold statement and then you qualify it later on and, and I don't think you should have it underlined. I think you should qualify that statement when it's underlined, uh, referring to point one, "As long as you met the requirements in point one," or something like that.
Well, as you know, this was agreed to by the Santa Barbara School District and Peabody at the time and
I wasn't here in 2007.
So, I understand, I'm just saying that there are lots of things that we've found over the past four years that we know we have to work on and change.
Point that one out.
Clarify and simplify.
Uh, does the new open enrollment law have a bearing on charter schools or students from PI schools? If so, where do they fit, uh, especially Harding and McKinley into these priorities or other PI schools? Where do they fit in your priorities?
They don't fit in a priority and that, and that law doesn't apply to the charters.
Yeah, good, I didn't know if it did or didn't, but I had a different opinion on it than, than that, so.
We've talked about it. With district.
Does it, Dr. Sarvis?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm making other notes.
Does the PI?
When we get the, when we get the state guidelines on open enrollment, we expect that we will need to make further modifications for the charter schools. I mean, each of the charter schools will have to adopt policies on open enrollment as well. We haven't specified what they are because we do not yet have the state guidelines, but when we do, we expect something like this to come back to you from probably each of the charter schools addressing open enrollment.
Okay, that's open enrollment. What about PI schools? The current PI schools? We, we had a qualification in Cesar Chavez or at Adelante that gave program improvement schools a priority, I believe. No?
I don't, I don't recall that we did.
No, it doesn't apply.
Okay, we'll go from there. In the public lottery number four, which is the inter-district, I believe, and, and intra-district?
Right.
I'm presuming, um, that you'll have three separate drawings. Uh, it won't be all of them dumped into one hat, I'm presuming you will have a drawing for in-district residents, you'll have a drawing for siblings of currently enrolled out-of-district charter school students and a, a drawing for out-of-district students.
Yes, thanks for clarifying that.
So there will be three separate, separate drawings?
There will.
Okay. In the script for the phone, it indicates that students will be admitted based upon the order of names drawn. Is it assumed this means within each priority category?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it is presumed that.
Right, those are just notes to help the secretaries as they talk to individuals to give us a call.
People hear what they want to hear sometimes, and so I just want to make.
It's true, and that's why, uh, what you received, of course, is just a draft, we're finalizing it all this week.
On number, my fifth, on the same basic question as number four regarding the 110 kindergarten names, will these 110 be broken down into separate drawings for the priority categories?
Absolutely, they always are.
And why is it limited to 110? Why wouldn't you give everybody who applies a number?
We will give everyone applies, sorry, we will only give 110 the enrollment packets.
But you say on here, in the script, that 110 kindergarten names will be drawn. So it seems to me you limit it to 110.
There won't be, that's, that's misleading. That, all the names will be drawn, everyone will receive a number from each of the lotteries that are held.
Each, so each lottery, it won't just be 110?
And they're all published separately too.
Yeah, it just won't be 110 names, one through 110?
No, we'll keep on going.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying.
And I'm, I'm making the presumption that a family who picks up the application, say on January 14th, will have three days to return it by, to be in the January 20th lottery.
No, and if you think we should clarify that, uh, we will, but you'd have, uh, we've also put in all of the, um, documents that we're creating, that the final deadline for all papers is 3:00 on the 14th.
This doesn't say that, this just says that you get, you get an application, you have three days to get it back in.
Well, and then it says that the last day is the 14th.
That's the enrollment, it doesn't say anything about the proof of, uh, evident, uh, residence.
We'll clarify that, we really need that date to be the deadline, just in order to get ready for the lottery, so thanks.
I'd like to make it clear that the three days, you know, ends on the, on the 14th.
That will be easy to add.
Okay, Mrs. Deacon?
Oh, just, just following up on, on Mr. Herron's, um, because I was a little confused when I read some of the material as well. So if someone picks up an application, um, at the, at the beginning of the application period, they have to return it three days after that?
Yes.
They do, okay. So that deadline is really for, only for people who are, have picked up their packet three days before the deadline?
Really, it is, yes, because the enrollment period is from the 4th to the 14th.
Right, okay.
We can clarify that.
So if I was, yeah, if, if I was a parent, I would be a little confused because, and you may get people coming in thinking that 14th is the date for everybody regardless of when they picked up their packet.
Right.
And I, I understand you, in here it says, excuse me, you've got three days, but I, I, I think maybe that just needs to be a little more clear.
Right, um, wh- what would the Board think about just taking out the three days and just making sure everyone had them in by the 14th at 3:00?
My question is, why, why the three days, so?
Well, the three days is really just to have people
So it's staggered, yeah.
Stagger it and keep it coming.
You, you might be better off having a single deadline, yeah, because otherwise you're gonna have to verify everybody's application date, okay, thank you.
I think that would be easy to do too.
Mrs. Parker?
Um, I appreciate your comment about, uh, finding the glitches over the, the years since we, uh, agreed on this charter since 2007 because, we have seen things come forward, where it's like, oh, that clearly needs, um, to be modified, adapted. Um, one of the things that I, I was really very surprised to find this year was that Peabody had not been following the charter in terms of how it enrolled students. And, um, I thought that that was one thing that was really clear, that it was a lottery and it's a lottery for all students, um, no matter if they've turned their paperwork into the beginning of the enrollment period or at the end of the enrollment period. Um, and so to hear about, you know, midnight lines and, um,
Well, that's an exaggeration.
Well, lawn chairs and hot chocolate, things like that.
But yes, I understand your point.
But you know what was happening, um.
We never expected more than 110 people to come.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm pleased
And as you know.
I'm really pleased to see that the process i- is, um, going to be followed this year.
Absolutely.
It, this does really raise a lot of larger issues though, and we're seeing this trend now of about 130 or so, you were saying maybe 140 students trying to get into these spaces. And I'm really concerned about your open enrollment period, we didn't define it in our, in the charter. Um, but as, um, my colleagues are talking about this January 14th deadline, one of the things that we saw, uh, in terms of, uh, what I was getting feedback on was that this was really giving a lot of advantage to, um, very participatory parents, parents that were in the know in the district, that had friends who already had kids at the school. And one of the questions I had, that I know, Dr. Sarvis, you've looked up and maybe you can share that information now, was for the, your school is, what is your, the demographics of your school right now in terms of Latino and Anglo?
Oh, it's approximately somewhere between 35 and 40% depending on the grade level of Latino.
35 and 40% Latino?
Yes.
Um, so
Every grade level.
Of the students that did not make it into the kindergarten, who tried to get, who are Peabody-boundary and ended up at other schools, what percentage of them are, or, how many are there and how many of them are Latino?
The 27 students that we placed in our other schools, of that 27, 25 had Latino surnames, that'd be 93% Latino.
So my concern is that your, certainly the first-come-first-served process was really, um, disadvantaging Latino families. I'm also concerned because we know from our own district's patterns that our lower-income families and our English learner populations tend to enroll very late, they often don't enroll until the summertime. Certainly, a nine-day enrollment period, um, is, although I appreciate all the, the, uh, Spanish-language outreach that you're planning to do, I really strongly feel that nine days is very, very short and I guess I'm wondering what the goal is, why a nine-day enrollment? I know that for our district, we're at March 1st this year, um, for intra-district transfers.
No, I know your dates.
Yeah, so we may move that forward and I understand why we would move it forward because of master scheduling reasons, but why nine days?
People want to know whether they're in, in Peabody or not. And it just seems that allows us to do a lot of planning, it allows families to do planning. What we had kind of envisioned was if we were able to do open enrollment and the first lottery, by the end of January, then we can be letting those parents know that if they're not high on that list, that they should be thinking about other placement, work with Santa Barbara School District personnel to, to, um, alert them that they'll be having some people who honestly will be calling and and be looking for a school. It seems like when you have the, um, when you know you have the population there, and I don't think we have been unfair about our population, those numbers are what they are, but anyone who comes and moves to the area in the summer isn't going to get into Peabody, that's just the bottom line, whatever their ethnic background. So I don't know how anything would have been changed other than, I'm happy to extend that period, it just makes it hard on families who are just waiting to hear, they live right in the area and they're waiting to hear. But if you think it should be extended longer, certainly that is easy for the school to do, I think it's just hard on the population.
I personally, well, the two things that I would say ultimately, and this is just for this process, because I think this needs to be fairly minor and we'll have more discussions when the charter comes up again in 2012. But, um, for this, I want to say I think it is absolutely a no-brainer that, um, in district, in boundary siblings should have a priority over the general and boundary population. I think that's very appropriate. And it's something that, you know, we, we, we were hearing sob stories that were really, it, it, siblings should be with their, with their, um, which they should be together at schools, families should be kept together at schools, uh, particularly if it's in boundary, it just doesn't make any sense to me that they wouldn't have a priority, so I'm very much in favor of that. In this particular case, I am in favor of extending that open enrollment period by at least a week. Um, I could see that it would need to be ultimately in line with our intra-district, uh, enrollment period. Um, but if it were even a week longer where you had outreach and we're doing the extensive Spanish-language outreach that I see here, which I think is, um, really appropriate, um, that that just gives families that really don't understand the process, it just gives them a little bit more time. So that would be my suggestion in this case.
That's fine.
Other comments?
I just actually want to echo, um, Ms. Parker's comments and say that while the, it's, it's pretty clear that that may not have been the intent, the, the way that this is set up may unintentionally, um, the way that this is set up may unintentionally disadvantage communities who may not otherwise know about this process. And I think in retrospect, and adding an additional week of waiting time may diminish some of these, what could be perceived as inequitable process for certain communities that don't have as much information. So I think that the cost benefit is not too much.
I actually would prefer to see it extended even longer. I was thinking January 30th, just to the end of the month. So not significantly longer, but I feel like the longer deadline, the better. And I agree with Ms. Parker that some of the other issues probably are more appropriate for when we address the charter renewal. But I also agree that I think students who are within the bound, the attendance boundaries and have siblings attending the school already do deserve to have a higher priority. And so I think as it relates to this particular request, that seems appropriate. I hope that there will be a lot of outreach to the Latino and Spanish-speaking community for this.
But I hope you understand that this hasn't been a problem. I think that extending the deadline is a good thing. I think it will always help more people get the word out, but I think ours, if you come and look at our population and you see it, our population is very balanced. This is not an uneven, unbalanced school. But I am, I'm fine with extending that period if we catch one more person who hasn't seen any of our flyers or the ads or heard any of the radio announcements. Absolutely.
I don't disagree with you, except that it is one of the lower percentage of Latino students in the elementary district. And given that 93 percent of the ones who didn't get in are Latino, it probably, it sounds like it could have actually been higher had those, some of those students had.
I understand the perception.
But be that as it may, I think on this particular issue of the change in the priority, but I would really like to see the deadline extended.
All right.
Ms. Parker?
I would like to make a motion, then, that in the revised language of the charter school enrollment policy, and I'm looking here to see if we have the page number. We don't in the charter itself, but your policy here mimics exactly what's in the charter. I would add, I would suggest, I guess, I won't, actually, I won't talk about the underlining. You can decide if you want to remove the underlining on that. But that there be a new priority number three, which is siblings of currently enrolled students who live in the former Peabody attendance area, and that the language in sentence number two of the second paragraph, which starts with further admissions to Peabody Charter School, will be a random selection process. The second sentence would start with, "Applications will be accepted during an initial open enrollment period that will end January 30th for enrollment in the following school year." Those would be my two revisions in my motion. I do want to, as an aside, say, I don't think it's fair to families to not, to have a school that's constantly oversubscribed. And I hate, I know your parents are gonna hate this. They're gonna hate the lottery and the uncertainty. And it is not, normally, if this were one of our schools, I'd be saying, okay, we need to look at a boundary change. It's not easy to change a boundary for a charter conversion school. And it needs to go all the way up to the state board for a waiver if we were gonna do that. But I think that our two boards need to be talking about ways to resolve this because I think it's gonna make for some surprised families and some unhappy families, and I just hate to see that.
It has, and I agree.
I think you made motion. And I agree on, you know, all these points. I agree with the sibling piece, too. So I'm gonna go ahead and second this motion.
Or let me just say that we are bringing back a study of attendance area students, attendance area numbers in Adams at Peabody and the former attendance area of Peabody, Harding, Monroe. In fact, we'll just bring all the schools to you, so you can take a look at these and you can look at the different cells and how adjustments might be made at some time in the future.
Thank you, I'd like to see that. But for now, we have a motion on the floor, so it's, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. That brings us to item F6, approval of student discipline.
I'm willing to go ahead and make a motion on this. I will move to approve the recommendation of the administrative hearing panel for one school year expulsion in case 10-11-12.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Okay, that brings us to the conference agenda. Item G1, discussion of accelerating Thompson bill unification through County Committee on School District Organization and California Department of Education waiver process.
Well, this is really a very important item. You know, four years ago, the school districts pursued formal reorganization as a joint union, or, I'm sorry, joint resolution, not joint union, joint resolution districts. There are a lot of different structures for school districts out there. The district is again considering an organizational change and has been studying the feasibility of becoming a Thompson unification district. The study has been undertaken by Eric Smith, our deputy superintendent, and he'll be presenting it tonight. Just like the change in joint, to joint resolution status, the Thompson unification status could combine the current elementary and the secondary district without involving the outlying districts, the other feeder elementary districts in our area. So with that, Eric Smith is going to present this.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvas. I think I want to make that explicitly clear that when we're talking about a Thompson bill unification, by definition, that means the unification of an elementary and a secondary district where you actually exclude other feeder elementary districts. So under this proposed reorganization, Montecito Union, Galita, Cold Springs, and Hope would all be excluded, and they would all be asked by us to opt out via board resolution. So now that I got that, you know, prefacing remark out of the way, I can get into the PowerPoint presentation. So we're talking about Thompson bill unification as basically, as amended by Assembly Bill 174. What is a Thompson bill unification? Senator Mike Thompson sponsored legislation in the early 90s that allows an elementary and high school district to unify without having to include all feeder elementary districts. For some time, the state has provided fiscal incentives for districts to unify. The Thompson bill unification legislation retained that fiscal incentive. Many common administrations, some of our particular configurations, some that are slightly different, have used the Thompson bill unification since its inception to unify. I've actually lived through one of those in Paso Robles in 95 through 97. This issue was studied back in 2005 by the Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team, in which I happened to be a team member on that study. We arrived at a different conclusion at that time, and I'll tell you why. But our concerns were really echoed by what School Services of California found out, which was, one, based on the configuration of the districts at that time, there was a specter with regard to the loss of COLA on future revenue limit dollars and potential loss of equalization aid in both the elementary and secondary districts. Prior to AB 174 passing, which modified dramatically the school district reorganization process, you'd rarely be looking at a protracted process up to at least two years, which would include an election, both for the question and the composition of a new board. So you'd be saddled with the cost of the election and the potential change in board composition right off the bat. What's changed? Well, a lot. COLAs are but a distant memory. We received COLAs in times of economic prosperity. COLAs are an inflationary adjustment to the revenue limit. So not only do we not have COLAs, we've gone the other way. We've got a 17.963 percent deficit on the revenue limit. So we're basically getting 80 cents on every dollar. The other thing that really pencils out significantly different, and we'll talk about this when we look at the calculation, is both changes in the salary schedule and changes in the number of FTEs in each district. And why that's important is because that's what drives the calculation that gives you more money. The underlying premise of the fiscal incentive was that in most cases, you'd have unified districts, which were not common administration, with a single common governing board and a single certificated bargaining unit. And so the state gave you money to level up the salaries of those employees in the district, the lower district, which is normally the elementary district, up to the high school district. And there's a methodology behind the calculation that basically funds an add-on to the revenue limit. So probably it's a good time to segue into what is a revenue limit and how are they different? And I know there's a little primer that needs to happen here, so I'm gonna talk about revenue limits for a minute. Revenue limits are different in every school district. As a rule, elementary districts have the lowest revenue limits, secondary districts have the highest revenue limits. Unified districts normally have someplace in the middle. Revenue limits can be either low wealth, meaning below the statewide average, or high wealth, meaning above the statewide average. And so when you look at the revenue limit, you really want to look at where are we now as a separate elementary and secondary district, and where would we be as a unified district if we undertook a Thompson bill unification? Well, right now, we're low wealth, both in the elementary and secondary. Our revenue limit is below the statewide average, which would make us eligible for equalization aid. Okay, but under this calculation, based on the configuration of FTEs and salary schedules, we'd move to a unified revenue limit that would be higher than our current secondary revenue limit. So, one, the issue with COLA eroding it over time does not exist, and because you're moving into a high-wealth status, you would never be equal to, or you'd never be eligible for equalization aid because you've already got everything you're gonna get. So those two concerns are really not on the table anymore, and we'll talk about that once we look at the calculation. Dave, can you move over to the Word document? So when we look at this calculation, it's really a two-step process. Pardon me?
I was just asking if we could enlarge it, but I think Mr. Heron did that.
So what this shows you is the revenue limit before the deficit in each district. So there's the elementary revenue limit, and here's the secondary revenue limit, and here's our P2ADA in 910 for each district, and that's our combined P2ADA. So if you took this amount times this amount, you'd come up with this amount, right? Same calculation here. And one of the criteria is, in the ed code, that you have to have at least 25 percent of your ADA in the affected districts, and you can see we have 32 and 68, so we meet that criteria. That's why it says 25 percent, test met. So in this particular case, what we do is we blend the revenue limits of both districts, similar to what we do right now. It's revenue neutral. It does not create any more money. So once we do that, you can see that we get to a blended revenue limit for the combined districts of 69, 18, 36. Here's the significant part. You remember I said the legislation, or the legislative intent, was to provide dollars to bring a lower salary schedule up to a higher salary schedule? Well, we already have uniformed salary schedules. And I know that, you know, as much as SBTA would like to see all this on their salary schedule, there's no requirement in law that occurs, and so this is actually generates pure unrestricted dollars. You know, that, yeah, there's a handout here. I think everybody has it. Yeah, can we take that two off there? Dave, I don't know if you can delete it. That is a typo. There we go. So when we do this calculation, we look at, it's a two-step thing. The first thing we do is we look at the total salary and benefits for certificated, and where, or we did it backwards, we did classified this way, for classified across all funds in each district. And then we derive what's the total mean average for each. So here's what we do. We look at the total salary and benefits for all the classified employees and divide it by the number of FTEs in that district and come up with a mean average. Okay? Then we do the same thing in the secondary district. And then what we do is we look at the difference, or that differential, and we take that and we multiply it times the FTEs in the lower district, and that, that's how you arrive at your add-on. Okay? That's the first part. So then we replicate that calculation for certificated. Once again, we look at the mean average by taking the total salaries and benefits, dividing it by the number of FTEs, coming up with a mean average in the elementary district, doing the same calculation in the secondary district, subtracting one from the other, and coming up with a differential, multiplying that differential times the number of FTEs in the lower, the elementary district, and there's your add-on for certificated. Then you would take the add-on for classified, the add-on for certificated, and here's your total add-on. Now, remember, that's before the deficit. So then you would multiply that times the deficit, and you would come up with a number that looks like that. The reason this calculation is a little bit different is because statutory law says that your revenue limit increase could be no greater than 10 percent of your blended res, or your base revenue limit. So this 6918 cannot grow more than 10 percent. So what we do is we take the total add-on, divide it by the total ADA, to figure out what a per ADA add-on is, and that's what it looks like. So we take the 536, we add it to the 6918. This would be our total estimated unified revenue limit per ADA before the deficit. And if you look at this figure, look at this before the deficit, go way up versus the high school district's revenue limit, 7310. So the unified revenue limit is not only high wealth, above the statewide average, but is higher than our current secondary revenue limit. And that's significant because that wasn't the case in the last time this calculation was looked at. So if we go back down to the end, if we took this number here and we divided it back into the 6918, we're at about a 7.7 percent increase. The max is 10. You know, we probably could maybe do something to increase it, but we've already had these numbers validated by the county committee. So these numbers are public, and we feel comfortable about that. So this is how the calculation works. So if we can go back to the other PowerPoint, it begs the question, why now? Well, obviously, the state economy is not recovering, and our districts remain probably in the worst possible place, between basic aid and revenue limit. We're right on the cusp. Property tax remains, you know, growth remains anemic. We don't see it returning to pre-recession levels anytime soon. We've run various simulations simulating out 10 years with, you know, status quo economic projections, partial recovery, 50 percent recovery, and all the simulations we looked at, going to the new unified revenue limit would be better than remaining separate. Changes in law enable unifications to be decided at the county committee level. We can expedite it by seeking board waivers, or state board of education waivers. And that could be a waiver process both for the election and would allow us to at least keep the existing board until 2012. So let me talk a little bit about that process. I know you guys are sneering, but it is $6 million. So the county committee process, they have to study the nine criteria. So the county committee process, they have to study the nine criteria that are delineated in the ed code, and they're listed in here, but they're things like, will the proposed reorganization have an adverse impact on, you know, ethnic balancing, or school facilities, or community identity? Well, we're basically continuing to operate like we've always operated. So the question, or the answer to all those questions will be no, 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 no. So the petition could be drafted fairly quickly, and then if we move forward, we'd probably seek concurrently the waivers through the State Board of Education, because if we did move forward, the goal would be to become what's called effective for all purposes by July 1, because that's when we get our money. What could go wrong? Well, it's pretty clear to me that the county committee will determine that the petition is sufficient. It's almost impossible for them not to. State board waiver process, if there was some kind of opposition there, they could force us to go to an election, which would dramatically slow down things. When I was talking to council today, the way the petition could be drafted relative to the county committee's consideration, if there was some problem with the state board, it would allow the county committee to revisit, to work with the board on the election dates. That's a worst-case scenario, obviously, because we don't know what kind of election dates might occur. You know, if Governor-elect Brown decides to put a special election on the ballot, or whatever the case may be. But hopefully, we would not have to go that route, and we could concurrently seek and obtain waivers through the state board at the same time that the county committee was grappling with the petition. So what I'm trying to get a sense from the board, well, I'd like to hear your comments first, and then I'll try and get a sense of, I can get what I need to do to move forward. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions, board members?
Can you tell us about that 2000?
Mrs. Deacon?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Deacon, and then Mr. Haren?
Okay, so for me, the big question is, say this proceeded, say we decided to do it, it proceeded on the timeline that's proposed here, how would that interface with the previous budget issue that you just described to us? I mean, it's not exactly even, but...
It's close. I think what you would be forced to do, or probably what the county office will require us to do, is to go down parallel tracks. And we would probably have to go through the process, but you would always know if this was approved by July 1. You could pull back on a number of those things. Now, obviously, we're looking at a snapshot in time. You know, in January, the situation could get a little worse, but at least you'd have someplace where to draw revenue. I mean, I see this as one of the few opportunities school districts have to actually generate revenue, and we're uniquely positioned to deal with it. Most districts won't have this avenue open to them. It's ironic in the sense that, as many budget wars that I've been through, you always have laypeople saying, well, why are you always cutting, can't you find revenue someplace? Well, it's incredibly difficult to find new revenue, and here you have a significant magnitude of revenue that we could, you know, garner for the districts.
Could you just address real briefly the benefits to our staff? I mean...
Yeah, there's a couple of issues. One, obviously, the benefits would be, you know, staying off a large percentage of cuts. There are some things that you need to be aware of with regard to school district reorganization, especially with classified staff. There's a provision in the ed code 45121 that basically says, after the date of effective for all purposes, they're protected from reduction of force for a period of two years. So that's something the board would have to contemplate prior to that date to protect ourselves, you know, because what you don't want to have is us being staffed up in categoricals or things that are non-sustainable, and then the funding goes away, and we have to absorb it. So there's some systematic planning that needs to occur, and the board just needs to be aware of that.
Let's entertain our public comment now.
Lane Wheeler.
Yeah. Thank you, Lane Wheeler, SBTA. I'd like to thank Eric and Meg and his department for, their department, for putting this proposal together. We appreciate the creativity that they've brought in a time of extreme need. I will take your memories back to last springtime and the cuts that we, the district, had to make. And I project that now forward to another round of $5 million in cuts. I think after you went through the low-hanging fruit and came up with $100,000 or $200,000, then the hard cuts really came. Those are class-sized increases, reduction of employees, and major cuts to our educational programs. We're really looking at another layer of cuts that will be scorched earth. I mean, we, I think Mr. Haren said last year, we're cutting off either our left arm or our right arm. We're going to start to look like a Monty Python movie here if we don't find some other ways to help ourselves. The cuts within, the cuts that you made last year, I hear every day from our employees, from our students, from our parents, how they're impacting their kids. I'm sure Dr. Sarvis and Ms. Swawsky do too. But we are really experiencing a very heavy burden on our employees, on their ability to provide the basic educational services. I think Dr. Sarvis said that we have made remarkable, remarkable progress, given the fact that we've cut $20 million, $25 million in the last five years. That's, less is more is not really the model we want to take forward here. I'd like to remind you that SBTA, and I won't speak for the other union, but we certainly have been respectful of the fact that the district is in very hard straits financially. We have not asked for cuts in cost of living increases. We have not asked for any kind of raises, and yet we've had to sustain heavy, heavy increases in our costs for health, welfare benefits. Employees are paying on the order of almost $400 a month right now for health and welfare benefits. We're happy to have those, but it is a very great cost to our employees. And we really do believe that we need to take this measure forward. At least, we would encourage you to support this effort and see what comes of the presentations to the local, the surrounding school districts and the local school boards. So we would give our support to at least moving this process forward, and we'd ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Haren, I think I had said you would be next.
I'll forget it.
Okay. Ms. Parker?
We did look at this five years ago, before I was on the board, and Ms. Cordero is now the senior member of the board. But I was here watching. I was already in the audience at that point. And it didn't pencil out, but this really speaks to revisiting ideas. And I want to give you so much credit, Mr. Smith, for thinking of looking at this again and having our staff take it through the process, because it could really be an incredible lifesaver. So thank you. My questions, I have two, or maybe more than two. One is, this, you did the work, you do the work on the 0910 numbers. We're already in 1011. By the time it goes into place, it's 1112. Do you estimate it's going to be the same number?
There's a rule in school district unification law that you always have to use the second prior year. The idea is you can't use the prior year because then you could manipulate. So they want those numbers frozen in time. So we're pretty much stuck with the 910. I'm not sure, given bringing back the staff that we brought back in 1011, our numbers would actually look as good, you know? So I think 910 might be more in our favor. And since they've been validated by the county committee's staff already, I think you let sleeping dogs lie.
Okay. My next question is, elementary district, Ms. Cheteau, you said that it's currently enjoying a bonus of $90,000. So for us to pop back into revenue limit and get $6 million, let's see, I think that that's a good thing, but it will pop the district out of revenue limit, obviously, with a higher, sorry, out of basic aid into revenue limit. With a higher revenue limit, it's so much, so much more than our current revenue limit. One of, one of the questions I had was our charter schools. They all get the charter block grant. I'm assuming that this will not affect them in any way?
That's, I will verify that, but that's my assumption.
And what is their current revenue limit? We have a, we have three elementaries and one middle school program.
I believe it's like 5,482, and then like a 6,000. I'm doing this out of memory, actually.
Those are after the deficit, Meg?
No. They, hold on a sec. I can pull that information up.
Oh, those are elementaries. That's right.
And we fund them mostly through revenue limit anyway. There we go. Their revenue limit is 5054, 5128, 5278, and 6142.
So that is, that's their deficit revenue limit, I assume?
That is their, that is their revenue, that's their entitlement. They don't deficit, they don't do it like we do. They just give us hard numbers.
Okay. But I mean, it's the equivalent of, because those are lower than they used to be. So for our elementary students and charters, they'll be getting about $2,000, more than $2,000 less than our district per student.
Right. And remember that this number right here, and this has the, this is a combined, so this has Santa Barbara middle in it, that they're entitled to, their block grant is entitled to $6.2 million. And we fund them at that rate because our property taxes cover almost all of that. So whatever happens to us revenue limit doesn't do anything, that's in our bucket. The property taxes go to their bucket.
Okay. And if, for example, if we had a charter high school, which we don't, we would be getting more than $1,000 more per student in district as opposed to any charter high school, correct?
Yes, with the 6142, you mean?
Right.
Yeah. I just wanted to be clear if there are charter teachers and parents that are looking at this, that they understand that this doesn't affect their revenue limit, and that that's where it will stay. The other question I had was about 2012. And we don't have to, if we are lucky or we are fortunate and go through and do all the waiver processes, we don't have to have an election until 2012, but until, in 2012, every seat on this board would be open.
And you'd set the rotation in the petition. That's correct. So if...
What do you mean, the rotation?
So let's say you, let's say, you know, you've got the two and four. So how many seats start with two? How many seats with four? You would prescribe that in the petition.
Well, my assumption was, and that's what my question was, Ms. Limone and I are tagged to the 2010, 2014 cycle. So would I assume that Ms. Limone and I would then run for the two-year term? Would that be specified in the petition?
I think we can specify that in the petition.
And then it would actually be like three seats open on a four-year term? This is the way we're looking at it.
That's right.
Three seats open under four-year term and two seats open under two-year term.
And just so you know, that if you don't prescribe the number of seats, it defaults to five. But if you wanted to go to like a seven-person board, you'd have to prescribe it in the petition. Not that I'm advocating that.
Okay.
Because actually, I was in a district that went from 10 to seven, and I really wish that we wanted to prescribe, and we just would have defaulted to five. That's how I know that.
All right. Thank you.
You know, one other thing about the financials, remember that the unified revenue limit, in the event that there are any cost of living adjustments or the deficit is reduced, the unified revenue limit would get the benefit of that prospectively. So that's just something to think about.
Thank you. Mr. Haren?
Mrs. Parker used the word presumed when she said the two of you would be the two terms, and there'd be three other openings. And I think the word presumed, I think I heard you say that this board would have to decide who on it would, who would be running for two years and who would be running for four years?
Well, no, I mean, because you guys are all, I'm not sure you say that, I'm not sure that part is prescribed in the petition. It's just there's two-two and three-four. Is that how you set up the rotation?
I would assume that we...
I think they're presuming that they're going to run for this.
We would have to apply for one of those positions?
I was going to say, I think we would, I would assume that we would decide which seat we wanted to run for.
Exactly.
That's why I say it's an independent decision.
Absolutely.
It's not a presumption.
Absolutely.
If they were smart, they might run for four-year positions.
Okay. Well, with that, oh...
One question, and I'm going to ask Mr. Smith to play a little bit of imaginary work here. So under what conditions would this not work for us? And it's probably imaginary, because I don't believe that those conditions may exist in our state anytime soon, but when would it, or how?
Well, here, this is the, some of the analysis we've done, and most of our focus has been, obviously, under this calculation, the unified revenue limit trumps the revenue limit of both districts. So that's a non-issue. So the second issue go to, is there any scenario where we would be so deep into basic aid in both districts that it would trump the unified revenue limit? Well, then you start looking at, are you going to bank on, on a macro level that the state's economic engines, including sales tax, income tax, except corporate tax, capital gains, is basically going to grow slower than growth in assessed valuation in Santa Barbara in and of itself? I'd bank on the state's economic engines to recover at some point and grow faster than what we'll see in terms of increased property tax growth just in Santa Barbara.
Well, let me add, in the event that we, that basic aid did exceed the revenue limit amount, it would still be to the district's advantage to be unified. We wouldn't be running testing programs for two different districts. We wouldn't be running all of these state agency reports and reporting for, as if we had separate districts. It would be for one district.
That's an issue too. And then, I mean, if you got to a point where, we're going to go back to the bucket analogy, that your property taxes, your local property taxes exceeded the revenue limit entitlement of your newly unified revenue limit, then you're talking about property taxes, you're talking about deep into basic aid because your statutory revenue limit is so much higher. So I just, yeah, it's a positive thing. Do I think that's likely? No, just based on the scenarios we've seen. But, you know, in the interim, if something like that did happen, and it might be an interim basis of 10, 20, 30, 40 years, I think you're better off going with the unified revenue limit, because it's, once again, a revenue limit that's not only above the statewide average, but it's higher than your existing secondary revenue limit. So...
I have a question. Could you talk a little bit about the, how the budgets would work in a unified district?
Sure.
Because in the past, that's been one of the, I don't know if I'd want to call it a stumbling block, but it's certainly been one of the areas of contention.
Well, I think there's a couple of issues. Really, they're mechanically for us at a staff level, it'd be easier, because we wouldn't be logging in and out of, you know, a financial system. Right now, if we want to go in the elementary, we've got to log into District 17. If we go into the second district, it's 31, and we toggle back and forth. But if you're really asking me about the issue in terms of, you know, pooling resources and pooling revenue, we do that already under the combined budgets, under ed code 35110. So really, there's no difference. So anyone that would argue that that's an issue, we've been doing that ever since, what, 2005? So we're already doing it.
Well, except we maintain clear separation of the secondary budget and the elementary budget, we have to make, you know, transfers from one to the other if we want to, if we want to...
If we move money from a special reserve from one district to another, that's the only requirement that you have to disclose. Otherwise, everything is combined.
So under unification...
We have some special revenue funds, like deferred maintenance and building funds that are, you know, they're basically not combined. But because, in most cases, because where we'd had ballot language, which was prescriptive in terms of, let's say, Q and R or H and I, we'd have to keep that all separated, you know, by account codes anyways.
Okay. Okay.
But as far as the unrestricted, and for the most part, most of the restricted programs would become K-12 in nature.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Deacon?
You mentioned Q and R. There's obviously implications for existing...
There's obviously implications for existing bond measures, partial taxes. Um, do we need to start thinking about that right away?
Well, I, I think there's a couple of things. I mean, Q and R and H and I are very prescriptive of how the money can be used and where it can be used. If you're talking about prospectively, um, we can put things in the petition to talk about, let's say, for geo-bonds only used in school facilities improvement districts, so we can identify the elementary territory as opposed to the former secondary territory if we just want the voters to vote on improvements in those areas, and that can be done.
Thank you. So I think Mr. Smith would like to have some direction from us regarding whether, how, whether and how we would like him to proceed.
Yeah, and, and really, the direction I need is, obviously, this is not agendized, you know, for action, and we're not asking for, you know, any consideration of a petition. But at a staff level, we'd like to move forward with retaining counsel to draft a petition in accordance with the calendar. We'd like to get it in front of you in January, if this is something you wanna pursue. Because remember, we're also pursuing state board waivers at the same time. And, you know, there's a terminology in, in, in construction called critical path, where you don't want one thing to jam up everything else. Well, we wanna make sure that we do as many things concurrently as possible. So if we're pursuing something sequentially, we don't get jammed. And so that's one of the things we wanna do, is start working on, hopefully drafting a petition and getting it in front of the board.
Well, I-
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I certainly think that it would be worthwhile having Mr. Smith bring this back to us. And, you know, pursuing counsel, et cetera, so that it does come back to us, and we have a, we are in a position then to make some decision about whether we want to go forward with it formally or not. But I think your request for moving forward with just the process, uh, getting started is certainly where I think we ought to go.
So it seems like I have consensus there.
I think we do have consensus, I'm seeing, I'm seeing nods.
That's all I needed.
Well, and I wanted to speak to that. Uh, I also wanted to say that Eric Smith has really done his homework on this, and he's run it by people who really understand this very well, as, as well as the county committee. I don't mean that the county committee doesn't understand this very well, but, but it's passed review and scrutiny at, at a number of levels already. Uh, there are a couple of items in this calendar that need to be addressed right away, pursuing legal counsel is one. This is a critical timeline, and the direction that we would hope to hear is go forth, dedicate yourselves to this, uh, deliver this, and we'll see at each step of the way.
Well, go forth and dedicate yourself to this, and, and we wanna see some progress when we recon, when we, when we meet again.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have something in front of you at the next meeting.
Thank you. And in the meantime, enjoy the holidays.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so if we can then move on, I think we need to go back. And I've sudden, I've managed to lose my agenda. We need to go back to the items we pulled from the consent agenda. We pulled item, items D twelve, D four, I'm sorry, E twelve, E fourteen, and E sixteen. So Mr. Herron, if you'd like to address E twelve?
I'm trying to make it quick. On E twelve, there's two purchase orders for Fagan, Friedman, and Fullfrost. One-one-one-two-one-six and one-six-two-oh-four on page two of the background paper. And if I understand this correctly, these are purchase orders that say in essence, if bills come in from Fagan and Friedman, uh, they just get paid out of these two purchase orders, and we don't see them as individual bills any further. Is that correct?
Yes, what they did is they opened up a purchase order for the entire year. It, it create, it's not that you're not gonna see them, you can still see them, because if they're over ten thousand dollars, you, they'll come out on the warrants, right?
I don't, that's what my question is. Will they come out of warrant?
Well, you'll see them, you'll, you'll see them on the warrant run.
On the warrant run, yes, but as a separate item, like we currently see it, with the copy of the purchase order?
Um, I don't know what you receive, but don't you just receive a, a report that says F three?
No, we've got the actual, we've got the actual purchase order.
Oh, okay, then you'll see it hit against that purchase order then.
But we won't, we won't see the individual item any further. Like Giordano's has a two-hundred-thousand-dollar purchase order. We never see their numbers as far as the actual contract.
Right, you'll, you see them in, in the check run.
Right.
Right.
And I was told today that that check run is not public information, is that correct? We don't have copies of it, put it that way.
You get copies of it?
No, they don't get copies of it.
They used to get copies of all the, of the check run.
We get a copy of every single expenditure.
Right.
You do get copies of it, you get a copy of the report, but it, it has individuals' names on that.
I know that, that's one of my questions too.
And it is not a public record.
So this, this, this full document is not a public record. So my point is, there's absolutely no way for the public to see what the expenditures are for Fullfrost and for, in this case, these two purchase orders, the public, there's no way for them, and there's really no way for the board to know as, as well as it is now. We'd have to search every single page looking for, you know, each individual item, which-
Well, we could, we could do a periodic update and put it in the board brief or-
It just seems to me that to have, to have this particular company have two purchase orders, which are in essence, um, they get paid and we, it doesn't come to our attention clearly, nor the public's clearly, is not a good move, so.
Well, we can, we can get rid of these purchase orders and have them hit every single time. It just slows the process down, but we're more than happy to do that.
You know, I, I'm just speaking for myself, and so, um, I'd rather not vote against all of these things on here, I'd rather just vote against these two items. So, uh, I'll try making a motion to approve this document with the exception of these two purchase orders to Fagan, Friedman, and Fullfrost.
Okay, so your direction is that we-
No, I, my, my, no.
That's a motion, we don't have a second yet.
We may not even get a second, but I, in the, in the image of transparency for that particular firm, for the public not to be able to see specifically what we're being charged for legal expenses, I think is a mistake.
Do we have a second for this motion? Okay, the motion appears to die for lack of second.
There was mention, though, that we, we could be able to see these broken out, which is what you were requesting, Mr. Herron?
I'd like to see it continue as it has been for the last two years, where if it's over ten thousand dollars and it's a legal bill, we see a copy of it. This is to stop us seeing a copy of it.
So you want a copy of the legal bill?
No, I want, I want a copy of the purchase order. That's my, my, my motion is to get a copy of the purchase order and not have an open P.O.
So you want an individual purchase order for every single invoice for the legal fees, yeah?
Only if it's-
Okay, but that, I'm sorry.
But there are always ten thousand dollars or more.
Ten thousand, I mean, no change in the current, this, these two purchase orders changes the current process, like I said.
He doesn't want a standing P.O., he wants a purchase order confirming.
But that motion has died. So that's not the motion that we're, we're not, we're not dealing with that motion at this point now. I don't know if we will have another motion along those lines or not, but-
I'd actually like to look into a little bit more and, and, you know. I, I, I'm not gonna support the motion right now, but I'd like to think about it a little bit more about what another remedy might be. So, um, so that's why I'll leave it for now.
Okay, so then, do we have a motion to approve this?
May I ask a-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Herron?
What you're saying is you wanna look into it, but yet this motion creates these purchase orders. So you, you can't, unless you wanna retract this motion sometime in the future. Currently, you will, you will no longer see bills, you no longer see the purchase orders from three F. And it's up to a hundred-and-fifty-one, a hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars, that we won't see purchase orders.
Board, I-
Okay.
I would advise you to approve this and give us direction to give you a report on specific, on, on the specific matter. We can do that.
Ms. Limone?
Um, I like some background information, perhaps not at this time, but on why these, what, why this would be a good thing for this particular firm or legal services.
Special ed expenditures is a hot button and always has been a hot button. And with this particular firm, it's been a hot button. And all of a sudden, we're, we're not gonna be seeing bills from this firm as clearly as we currently see them.
So, just to clarify, it's more about the firm than it is about the expenditure itself?
I think it's not, I think it's about the firm and about the, the area in which this firm practices.
And, and the, and the high amount of the limit.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this item or a motion to reject it?
Um, I'll move to go, go ahead and approve E twelve, um, given Dr. Services' mention of the fact that we will be getting actually some specific breakdowns on these.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed?
No, but just related to those two purchase orders.
Okay, the motion carries three to one with Ms. Parker having to leave. Okay, item E four? I'm sorry, E fourteen?
E fourteen. The reason I pulled this is, I guess, simply to make a statement. If I knew today, if I knew last week what I knew today, I probably wouldn't approve this item at the last meeting. Um, this is spending jobs money that we've just been told we're gonna be five millions, we're, we're millions of dollars short, and yet we're spending that jobs money. And I wouldn't have voted for this expenditure of the jobs money if I knew we were looking at a five-million-dollar loss. That may not be good reasoning, but, um, I just wanna make that point. I will move for approval, but I wanted to make that point.
Okay, is there a second?
I need to make a comment. This money couldn't have shored up your deficit because it was restricted in nature and it's also one-time.
Yeah, but we, but all the jobs money was restrictive in nature at one time.
Yeah, but the only, with the exception of bringing back certificated staff and putting them over there, really, it's not gonna offset your deficit anywhere else. So I guess what I'm saying, it gives you no other advantage in solving the puzzle.
The extra seven-hundred-thousand dollars couldn't have been used anyplace else for any purpose?
Well, I mean, look at it this way. We could have brought, we could have put more certificated staff there, but you still have the issue next year to deal with. Because it's one-time in nature.
The, the money had to be spent.
But we have to spend it on something, and I wouldn't have spent it on this, is what I'm saying.
Okay, well, that's, that's logical.
Yeah, we'd have spent it someplace else.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay, the motion is to approve item, uh, E fourteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries four-zero with Ms. Parker absent. Um, item E sixteen?
Yes, my question to Mr. Hetjank is where does the validation action come into play in this process on E sixteen?
On E sixteen, we weren't planning on doing a validation process. If we did a validation process on E sixteen, it's gonna potentially have a negative impact on the timeline of having any of that work be accomplished this summer. We're doing a validation action on the Matt Academy, uh, uh, pro, project. When it comes forward to the board, it's not have a, a time-critical timeline that will prevent work from being done. Had conversations with legal counsel, who, we talked about, uh, bringing a further information to the board in the future about, would, do you wanna do a validation action once for the Matt Academy to set a precedent? Do you want to do one every time and spend the money? We've not had any opposition from any contractors about any of the lease-leaseback projects. So we're planning on coming back to the board in the future to have a conversation about, you know, do you wanna spend the money each time on lease-leaseback to do a validation action or not? But if you wanted a validation action for the H V A C at Dos Pueblos High School, chances are you're not gonna have any work be done this summer.
Well, what is it, we're approving here to go forward on the total project or just?
No, no, you, what, what we're doing is, is we're assigning, we're assigning an architect, and then that, along with that assignment, we're telling the architect that we're gonna do a lease-leaseback method, so that architect knows what type of construction delivery method will be utilized. Then we come back to the board with documents and the recommendation for the contractor.
And what's the total?
And then we come back to the board for a recommendation of approval of the documents based on the guaranteed maximum price.
And, and what's the total estimated project cost?
Previously, the, the estimate was, I believe, somewhere in the four-to-five-million-dollar range. This project will, will have a new design. It will include, uh, uh, at least one computer lab that doesn't have air conditioning now, that wasn't on the previous plan, so.
You answered my question.
Yeah.
My concern is that as you do this more and more, you will get people complaining because they're left out. I'm a, I guess I'm a believer in the validation, and the argument that it delays our time is not a good one with me necessarily, so, thank you.
Ms. Gordero? Perhaps I-
Dr. Service?
Perhaps I could help that concern. There's certain, certain projects who we really feel we need to move forward on. I mean, we need heat at that school before next year. Well, we need heat there now, but we're using, you know, little space heaters. But, uh, we will intend to do this for some of those critical projects, but we intend to go forward with validation processes, we're hitting the bulk of our projects, because we think that's a fair way to operate with the community.
And, and we'll be bringing back projects that are also traditional design bid-build. We don't anticipate that all of our projects with these bond issues are gonna be lease-leaseback. We plan on doing a blend of both types.
Thank you.
And that also gives contractors an opportunity to bid a job that haven't bid before, where we could have experience with them and then have confidence in them to offer them a lease-leaseback project in the future. Otherwise, there's no way for them to gain any experience with the district, and we definitely want a contractor we've had experience with, with lease-leaseback.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this item?
I'm gonna move to approve it for a couple of reasons. First of all, the, um, the timeline does make, is important to me. Um, I, in fact, when I saw that it started as school ended, I was really happy, because I can't tell you how many projects are underway while school is in progress and how hard that is on the students and, and the staff. So, um, for me, that's a big bonus. I also think, um, you know, we owe it to those folks who passed those bond measures to get up and running on these. And we've had a positive experience with the lease-leaseback at, um, the Engineering Academy. So, um, I understand you're gonna be bringing some others back in regular bid fashion, but-
This project will not be completed this summer, there's no way to get that out.
No, I know that, I, I understand.
It's gonna be a phased project, okay.
I wish it was gonna be completed this summer, but at least it's gonna start if, if everything goes according to plan.
Okay.
So I'll, I'm sorry, I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Comment?
One thing we might be forgetting is in the Engineering Academy, we got wording in all the documents that protected us from in case anybody challenged us. There was a, um, a way that our liability was protected. If I recall correctly, we had a, a minimum liability, and the contractor agreed to stop work and take a, take a small penalty, pay, charge us a small penalty. So we, we specifically be wording in that, those documentations to protect us against, because it was such a short timeframe.
And we could include those wordings in documents.
This is just, this is just the architectural.
Okay, we have a motion, we have motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to one with Ms. Parker absent. Okay, that concludes our return to the consent agenda. That brings us to, um, coming events. Are there any coming events that need to be discussed at ten-thirty-five? No, okay, future agenda items? I think we have a pretty full list of agenda items, but do we, no?
Actually, I just, I wanted to ask, um, at some point, I would like a full accounting of the, of the spending for the education jobs funds, because I, um, there's, there was a piece still hanging out there that I don't really feel like I know where that is allotted.
I have a, I have a board agenda item as well.
Okay.
Um, we have board policy language on new board member orientation, and we've done a number of things leading up to the election. Now that the election is completed, the policy specifically says that the board shall convene a meeting to provide an orientation and information to incoming board members to assist them in understanding the board's functions, policies, procedures, protocols, and agree upon standards of conduct. We may choose to bring C S B A into this, if you would like. It's something that nevertheless, I think we should do fairly soon. I don't know if you wanna try to wrap it into your meeting on the nineteenth? Perhaps that's already full with the super, potential superintendent search agencies, but we should be looking for a time to do this.
Okay, I think maybe we can meet and talk about that and send something out through B M E to find out what dates would work.
Good, thank you.
But thank you, I, I think that is important. Okay. With no other agenda items coming forth, I will adjourn the meeting.